Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the role, excuse me, call to order the Folsom City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 13th, 2018. The clerk, please call the roll.
Council members Gaylord.
Here.
Morin.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Miklos.
Here.
And Howell is absent.
Okay, if you'd all please rise and join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see a full crowd, so we can look at faces other than ourselves. So appreciate that. Any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay. And go ahead and call the first item, please.
Your first item tonight is your scheduled presentation, item 5A. This is a resolution of commendation honoring the Folsom Junior Bulldogs for earning the 2017 Excellence in Academics and Athletics Award.
Okay, so if you can have Sonny Lofton, the president of Folsom Junior Bulldogs, meet the vice mayor and myself right down there, and we're going to help you out with these commendations here. Mr. Sheldon? So, we're going to let you hold the first part, so you can show it as I read it, and then we're going to sit you with the recognition.
Yeah.
So ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to read to you the Excellence in Academics and Athletics Award presented to you as a commendation honoring the Folsom Junior Bulldogs for earning that achievement in 2017. Whereas the Folsom Junior Bulldogs is official youth football and cheer association Folsom, and whereas the Folsom Junior Bulldogs organization is committed to both academic and athletic excellence, whereas members of the Folsom Junior Bulldog football and cheer teams maintain their grade point average -- I'm going to screech you now. Whereas members of Folsom Junior Bulldog football and cheer teams maintained a grade point average of 3.0 or better during the football and cheer season. Whereas this level of academic achievement merits recognition from the Board of Directors of Folsom Youth Football and Cheer and the City of Folsom. Now therefore, I, Stephen Miklos, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the Folsom community, do hereby extend commendations of the highest regard to the members of the Folsom Junior Bulldogs who earned the Excellence in Academics and Athletics Award 2017 and encourage their continued scholastic excellence in the future. Passed and approved this 13th day of March 2018. So congratulations. And we'll let you lead the proceedings in any way, shape, or form you want. All right, well, I appreciate that.
First and foremost, thank you so much for having us out. I think it's very important. It's a rainy day outside. It's not very nice to get here from way back in the parking lot or across the street where I came from. But I think it's very important for us to acknowledge that knowledge is power. And in this day and age, we don't want robots. We want kids who are able to think for themselves, go in that classroom, and do what they're supposed to do. You know, we need to reward that and really hype that up. They get a lot of different things thrown at them through the internet and the video games and the movies and all that good stuff. We want to make sure that as adults, we really recognize when they're doing well in the realms that they need to. So, thank you so much for that. We're going to start with our bronze guys and ladies here. And the first person I have is Gulwich. Mr. Gulwich, coming on up. Thank you, sir. Shake the mayor's hand. Okay. We have Brooklyn Santucci. Awesome job. Thank you. Kylie May McKendrick. Kylie May.
Look at the camera when you get your certificate.
Oh, look, turning looks for a picture. Bronson Bambino. Great job, kid. Serena Santos. Hey, there you go. Kaylia Catalan. All right. Luca Nash. Good job, Luca. Good job, buddy. Peyton Salazar. Good job, Peyton. Sophia Meisner. Is it Meisner? Katie Wagner. Good job. Good job. The next level that we had was our silver level. Silver level. So we're going to start off with Joshua Tremaine? No? Not here. Okay, all right. Eric Anderson. Mr. Anderson. Great job, young man. Kylie Dunn. Kylie. Great job, Kylie. Joseph Pelka. Mr. Pelka. Great job, kid. Evan Trainellus. There you go. Good job, man. Ariana Semenza. There you go. Addison Brown? Addison? Nope, it's not here. Okay. Then we have Ruston Brown, right? There you go, man. Good job. Very professional looking, right? Mark Needlinger. Yeah, yeah. There you go, brother. Good job, man. Cara Linton. Is it Cara? Cara. Cara? I'm sorry. There you go. All right. Bryce O'Donnell. Bryce. Good job, Bryce. All right. Richard Semenza. There you go. Good job, young man. Ronnie Hensley. There you go. Isaiah Langham. Good job, son. Hayden Wait. Good work. Good work. Ava Nyman. There you go. Great job. Great job. Is Alex Sharp? Great work. Great work. Good job. Jordan McGarrett. Great job. Madeline McClintock. That's a great job. Good job. Sophia Hasselman. Great work. Great work. Addison Vigara. Hey, Addison Vigara. Good job, Addison. Colin Denny. They don't want to be in front of you guys for some reason. Yeah. Good job, Colin. Nick Wagner. There you go, right there. That's what I'm saying. There you go. Future attorney right there. All right. Zack Woodward. He's the other partner of that law firm. Good job, kid. Ellie Karouf. Good job, Ellie. Good work. Good work. Hunter Masterson. Is Hunter not here? No Hunter? Okay. Now, we're going to do our last, but never least. We're doing our, what level is this? What level is it?
Gold.
Gold. That means, that means you worked extra hard. Okay, we appreciate you. Come on down. We're going with Zoe Tanner. Good work. You did awesome. All right. Anthony Benavides. Good job, young man. All right. Tyler Sandy. Good job, kid. RJ Wirick. There you go, RJ. Grace Nanini. Uh-oh, fan club. You got some fans back there. I heard them. Good job, Grace. Brayden Bambino. You take your time. Don't you rush. Don't you rush.
There you go, bud. Great job. Hope you get better soon.
Tyler Main. There you go, guy. Ryland Guyer. Good work. Good work. Logan Hutton. Mr. Logan. Good job. Good job, kid. Tiffany. Boy, you make it hard on people. Tiffany Kajosnas?
Kajosnas!
Oh, Kajosnas. Okay, there we go. That threw me for a loop. I'm sorry. Great job. Great job. Sienna Normoyal. Great job, Sienna. Great work. Hannah Verwein. Beautiful. Beautiful. Thank you. Kenzie Brown. Good work. Good work. Nick Harris. There you go. Great job. Jacob Bambino. There you go. Great job. Hastings Piazza. Soplazo? Plazo? It looks like an eye. There you go. Good job. Ella Hansen. Great work. Great work. We're so proud of these kids. We definitely appreciate being in a community like this. I've been in a lot of communities. I didn't grow up in a community like this. But in our community that I did grow up in, it was a village to raise the kids. And we really want to start back in that direction at the Folsom Junior Bulldogs. We want to make sure that we keep that and keep it going, you know, from generation to generation. And we really appreciate your participation in this. Thank you so much.
I can't let you go away without me talking to you because I talk to you every year, you know? It's great. I was at the national opening Little League on Sunday. We had a beautiful day, that kind of baseball with it. Now, tonight, we've got football with it, right? We, it's so nice to have a town that the parents and the coaches and everybody give their time to raise their kids the way that we should raise them and to make them strong and healthy and enjoy themselves. This is why we're number one in California for talent for raising a family. And we're going to keep it that way. And if we can convince the city manager to do his magic and the mayor to do his authority, we may have a new field that's coming this year. Okay? Thanks for coming.
So before the, before the kids run away, kids, as loud as you can, I want to hear or yell, scream, whatever you do, on behalf of the work your parents and your coaches and their coaches have done. So let's give them a huge round of applause and a good Folsom cheer and whatever the football players do. Let's hear it real loud. Let's hear it. Thank you, guys, and I hope to see you back next year for the same awards, if not even higher. Right? That's what we always strive for. Thank you, everybody.
This is great. This kind of weather, they all come out. Fantastic.
I don't know how to turn a darn thing on or off. But I think, I think I haven't overcome what. So you know, Jim, there's only one, one way to top that, is if you were going to give a financial presentation, but I, I think we're just going to let that go tonight. Yeah. That's because they knew it was coming. Okay, it looks like things are starting to settle down a little bit. So if the clerk, you want to go ahead and call the next item?
Your next item is items, scheduled presentation, item 5B. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day.
So I've asked my colleague, Councilmember Gaylord, to do the honors, if you would mind.
Hello, hello? There we go. I'm pleased to introduce Amy Nunez, the City of Folsom Arborist, and she will be accepting the proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom for encouraging the community to become more involved with Arbor Day. And it's a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that the special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world will be celebrated in Folsom on Saturday, April 14th, 2018. And whereas in 1907, President Theodore Jude Roosevelt, sorry, Theodore Jude, a little Folsom history built in there, Theodore Roosevelt proclaimed that this is a national, national time to plant trees. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature citywide, catch rainwater, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and protect us from the harmful effects on the sun on our skin. And whereas trees are a renewable source giving us paper, wood, and, sorry, wood for our homes and furniture and sequestering air and soil-borne carbon. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas and beautiful, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas we will be planting, pruning, and mulching young trees in Folsom along East Natoma Street in celebration of Arbor Day. Now therefore, I, Roger Gaylord, on behalf of Stephen Miklos, Mayor of the City of Folsom, do hereby proclaim April 14th, 2018 Arbor Day in the City of Folsom and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and wildlands, planting a tree in their own or at the City Arbor Planting, or City Arbor Day planting. And further, I urge all citizens to enjoy a cool, the coolest shade of the trees and promote the well-being of this and future generations to become a Tree City USA for the 12th year in a row, proclaimed this 13th day of March 2018.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate that. So the clerk, call the next item?
Your next item is Business from the Floor. Our first speaker tonight is Stan Gardner. I understand Mr. Gardner has a special presentation for the City Council.
Good evening. Thank you. It's an honor to be here. My name is Stan Gardner. I've been a resident of Folsom for 22 years. And I've got something I think is going to be a little bit of fun for everyone tonight. Brief background, my full name is Stanley Walter Gardner. I was named after my great uncle, and I think some of you will recognize that name, as Earl Stanley Gardner. So widely known author, author of the Perry Mason stories. My middle name's Walter, was after my grandfather, who was Earl's brother. And what I have for you here tonight is an unpublished manuscript that's almost 100 years old. This original is still on onion-skinned paper, paper clipped together, was written by my grandfather in 1921. It's called Grassroots to Bedrock. It says, "Being a kindly chronicle of those men who pioneered the industry of gold dredging in the plasters of California." The last chapter's on the American River and talks about gold dredging here in California. It's a fascinating read of the men, the equipment, the challenges they faced on gold dredging. It's never been published, and I took the privilege of making five copies. I actually made six, so Everett, I've got one for you. And with council's permission, I'd like to give you copies of all of these for you to have.
That'd be wonderful. I appreciate that. So, probably maybe Elaine and or the officer, either one. So Stan, were you a little nervous trying to do a copy of that?
No, no. I'd made a copy a long time ago on the one and took it today and had him copy it. But yes, first time, without a doubt, because yeah, it's a...
Well, let me say something because your grandfather is causing me sleepless nights because I watch Perry Mason at 11:30 every night on the old channel. So I have to admit, I probably watched him as a younger man, but I'm catching up again, so I enjoy the show.
Well, good. And it was, was an honor to be named after him and to have that family legacy and be here in Folsom, so.
Great.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. I will probably contact the History Museum and see if maybe they would like to keep a copy in there as well.
Please do. I presented it to them probably 10 years ago when they were not interested at the time, but...
Well, it's a different conversation.
If they'd like to have one, they're more than welcome to it.
We may even think about putting one in the library, too.
There you go.
Cool. We love, we love, we love tie-ins to Folsom, so thank you, Stan. I greatly appreciate that. So the next item?
Your next speaker is Aaron Gurley.
So just as a reminder, as you come up, Business from the Floor are items that are not on the agenda. So if you're asked those questions, we're not allowed by, by law to be able to respond to those questions. We can only give direction to either staff or the city manager. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. So if we look like deer in headlights, it's because the law makes us look like deer in headlights.
I probably look like I'm a deer in headlights.
No, actually, you look as comfortable and relaxed as we do.
Good, 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 good. Well, I wish I had a manuscript to give you. That was a cool, that's a super cool thing. My name's Aaron Gurley, also resident of Folsom, and I am here representing Hildebrand Circle, a street I think we're all pretty well familiar with. Some of my fellow neighbors, would you raise your hand if you're here from our street? So rather than all of us take two minutes, I'm going to try to take five minutes. I hope that's okay.
I'll let you.
So I actually attended a city council meeting last May. I don't expect you to remember that. But I actually brought the Hildebrand Circle issue up at that time, and I was very pleased to see that, I could tell immediately, it was on the radar. For those of you who aren't aware, it's the Via Treviso Cut Through up to El Dorado Hills that has become a major thoroughfare through Folsom. It's a quiet Folsom city street where kids play and dogs run, and we sit outside at night. I don't have the exact data, and forgive me for that, but they, we, I'll cut ahead a little bit in story. Once we put some count strips down, it's like over 1,200 cars a day are now driving this once-quiet street. At the council meeting, Mark Rackelvan actually grabbed me after, took me outside, and a couple of my neighbors suggested that we come to the traffic meeting, that we were actually on the agenda for the next traffic meeting. So we attended that meeting, didn't realize there's power in numbers, and at that meeting, they were talking about stop signs going in across from Vista. Sorry, I've given a little bit of backstory.
That's okay. Take your time.
But there were like 30 people there, talking about these high schoolers parking, you know, where they can't even get to their trash cans and all of that kind of stuff. And for me, I was almost embarrassed that it was like me and two of my neighbors there. You know, makes it look like our issue isn't really that big of a deal. Went to the meeting, we got on the agenda for the next traffic meeting. At that point, we rallied the neighborhood. We probably had 26, I would think, at that meeting, and they let us all kind of go around. And unfortunately, they had to sit through, all of us taking two minutes, some of us taking Mark and his team said they needed to develop a traffic plan, kind of did it in a three-to-four stage rollout, emailed that all out to us. Communication was great. Everything was going really, really well. The city's been super responsive, and Mark and his team have been awesome, truly. First stage was striping of Hildebrand, which they kind of said would indicate, make the road feel more narrow, because it's a really, I don't know if you've ever been there, but it's actually kind of a long straightaway, pretty wide street. So the striping, they thought, would make it feel more narrow. At the same time, they wanted to implement stop signs strategically within the area. Striping went in, stop signs went up, and there was a buzz in the neighborhood, as you can imagine. People were excited. Texts were being sent, "Hey, stop signs are going in." Apparently, two people in the neighborhood weren't excited and kind of raised a stink, and the signs came right down. We moved on. We moved into stage two. Stage two would involve two flashing speed limit signs, one on northbound and one on southbound up on Upper Hildebrand Circle, indicating the speed to passersby. Took a while to get those. Mark had originally indicated to me, he thought by Christmas, we would have those. They actually went in two weeks ago tomorrow. So we waited till March. Again, speed limit signs went up. There was a buzz in the neighborhood. Texts are going around, signs are in. We're making progress. Again, one or two individuals called to complain, and within a week, one of our speed limit signs is gone. And I guess I'm here on behalf of all of us to voice our frustration that you have a lot of us who have chosen to engage the city, right, in a problem that is extremely important and is a really, really big deal. And we've gone to traffic meetings, and we've done the things that we've needed to do, and we've attended the meetings, we've provided the data, we've waited patiently. I mean, we're almost going on a year now. And just like that, our, this whole plan we've been working towards is just thrown out the window. And it's, it's extremely disappointing, to say the least. And again, for those of us with children, those of us who have taken the time to come to these meetings, to be a part of the solution, and the thanks we get is, "Hey, we got a phone call, some people didn't like what we were doing, so we're not going to do it." So we've essentially set a precedence in Folsom, that if I don't like a stop sign you put up, or if I don't like a speed limit sign you put up. So there's one at Iron Point Bidwell, slows me down every day as I'm trying to get on the highway. I'd like to propose that that get, you know what I mean? It's like, where do we draw the line of where one or two citizens can dictate to a traffic committee what's going to happen in our city? It's just crazy. So I don't really have a action point. I mean, we're frustrated.
I do, I do. I can comment on some things, but I'm going to let the city manager start. But yeah, there's, you'll hear that it's, it's not all lost by any stretch of imagination.
And Mr. Mayor, member of the council, and my friends on Hildebrand Circle, I know your problem. I have sat up there and witnessed it myself for over the last year and a half of I've, as I've tried to work with staff to, you know, to negotiate various solutions. But maybe I can explain a little bit about the, about how these things happen and then what we're doing about it in the future, because there are steps going on right now that we're handling at the administrative level. So in situations like these, where we are installing traditional-looking traffic controls in a non-traditional sense, and what I mean by that is, there's no warrant that could be found in order for us to use traditional traffic safety measures to place stop signs in Hildebrand Circle, right, the speeds and the, and the volumes don't support it. But sometimes we'll use these non-traditional steps in order to control odd problems, such as what we're experiencing here, that are real-life problems for the people that live on those streets. But in terms of traffic engineering, odd problems. And when we do that, we're not trying to create one more set of winners and losers, right? So usually, when we do these, we try and get everybody on board, or we try and tailor a solution that gets everybody on board. And so in the, in the situation that you mentioned before relative to the stop signs, we put them in. Some people didn't like them, so we took one of them out, as I recall, right? In the case of the radar signs, we put them in, assuming that nobody would have some objections about this. And candidly, if there's anybody in the office that does, or in the audience here that does object, I apologize for stubbing our toe on this, right? We would have normally taken more time, asked more people, and made sure that there was universal consensus around using that particular control. In this case, we just assumed there was, there was not. And so we removed one of those signs that was offending the neighbors that were most close to it. We also have problems out on Empire Ranch Road, which is largely the origin or the destination of the traffic that's moving through your neighborhood. They're getting out to Empire Ranch Road, and then most often, by my observation, my personal observations, because I've parked out there and watched them, out to Natoma Street and then across the bridge over into Job Centers in Placer County, most often. Street, and then across the bridge over into Job Centers in Placer County, most often. So, we also are receiving some complaints of this traffic on Empire Ranch Road, so decided to take that fugitive sign, if you will, stick it out on Empire Ranch Road, where we don't expect that it's gonna have the same type of effect that it would have in a neighborhood, because what we also know, this is information that I would know and you folks might not, but, but I have traffic cops sit out there with some regularity, and we write tickets, and most often, we can change behaviors by writing tickets. Well, I'm here to tell you, my friends, that Empire Ranch Road is resistant to that type of behavioral change right now, just because of the conditions out there, and that's not often the case, but, but it is the case in this time. So, I'll explain to what we're gonna do in the long term on Empire Ranch Road, but in the short term, we are going to go acquire another one of these radar signs, and we will find a compatible spot in your neighborhood to place it, so that we can get back to two going in either direction, because our experience does tell us, in neighborhoods like this, those type of controls do tend to work, because it's most often your neighbors or people closely associated with your neighborhood that are moving by there who are also living in a neighborhood, right? But out on roads like Empire Ranch Road, it doesn't work that well. So, what are we doing out on Empire Ranch Road in order to tailor the traffic so that they find other alternatives other than passing through your neighborhood? Because right now, it appears to be the path of least resistance, right? So, and that measure right now is we're, we are accelerating a great deal, many years in fact, a series of stop lights on Empire Ranch Road that would have normally have been put in there when the volume supported them, as the overpasses is put on Empire Ranch Road that has been planned for more than two decades, right? And so those lights will go on at, at Iron Point, at Broadstone Parkway, at Fear, at Ritchie, and at Natoma Street. And those traffic signals will be timed to provide for a 45 mile an hour speed limit, which I'm also here to tell you, I don't carry a radar gun around with me, but I know what 65 and 70 miles an hour looks like, and there is a great deal of speeding traffic on Natoma Street, and if you must slow down, because the signals are timed to require you to slow down, we expect that is going to have some traffic shaping effect, and hopefully, a traffic calming effect in your neighborhood by eliminating the number of cars that are seeking that route. When you add that to the fact that I've been working with the developer that is building that neighborhood that's really to the south and maybe a little bit east of you, and in El Dorado County, to finish Saratoga Boulevard, which will go from Iron Point all the way to the, to the El Dorado Hills interchange, to create a more direct route to most of those neighborhoods off Wilson Ranch Road, Wilson Road up there, we hope that'll help. Later this summer, we are gonna be widening Green Valley Road, so that those folks that are taking a right off Natoma to go up through your neighborhood will make, find it easier to take a left and get out towards Green Valley Road on Blue Ravine and not continue down east Natoma Street. And finally, I'll just add this in terms of just traffic engineering awareness, that the solution, this is not magic, but the solution to traffic congestion is traffic dispersion, right? And so the secret is not finding one thing that necessarily stops the traffic in your neighborhood, because we're not unilaterally in control of that one thing. Blocking that road off would probably certainly cut that traffic out, right? But we're not unilaterally in control of that. That requires a great deal of cooperation with El Dorado County that I'm not sure is forthcoming. But all of these other things will cause traffic shaping in that area that we expect that'll have a considerable impact in your neighborhood, and those things are real, they're happening right now. Oftentimes, they take longer than we wish they would, but we expect those traffic signals to be online before the end of this calendar year. We expect shortly to have another radar sign put up in your neighborhood, and we'll take it from there. And, you know, while oftentimes, there is strength in numbers, we have heard from the very first complaint, because I went out there literally myself over a year and a half ago, and I just sat over the course of a couple of months, during the morning commute, during the school commute, which is about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, during the evening commute, and various other times during the day. And you can see the different traffic patterns that exist in there. Sometimes, it's just a single car going through at 10 o'clock AM going fast, and oftentimes, it's a platoon of cars going through, because they're on their way to work in Placer County, or they're on their way home, right? So, I see it, I hear you, and that's kind of what we're doing.
I'll leave you with three things. One, if I'm hearing you right, another speed limit sign in our neighborhood forthcoming?
Yes.
In the immediate future?
Yes.
Two, I would propose 721 Hildebrand as a viable place. If you need to put a new pole, I will volunteer my driveway, if that's where you need to put it.
And I'll have Mark contact you.
And I'm on that side of the road that you need to put it, FYI. And thirdly, hear this as not disrespect, please, hear this as respectful disagreement. To hear that we wish we had taken more time is also discouraging, because we've waited ten months.
Yeah.
We've known, we've known these signs were coming since October of last year. We've had five months to prepare the neighborhood, to prepare the community. So, a little bit disingenuous, I think, to say we wish we had more time to have rolled this out properly. We had plenty of time. We just didn't.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't mean to, I mean, I think you misunderstood, right? I didn't say that we should have taken more time. I meant we should have done it right.
Sure.
And what we did not do right is make sure that there was consensus in the neighborhood, so that the one time we did it, it was done well and sustainably. In this case, again, because we're not trying to create winners and losers, right? I don't want to have one more set of unhappy residents in Hildebrand Circle for different reasons, right? And so, assuming that the numbers of people that are unhappy with the traffic are still greater than those that are indifferent to it, we'll find that location, if that location is 721 Hildebrand.
Remember that number, 721.
Pretty good with numbers.
All right.
And so, Mr. Rackavan will no doubt be in contact with you, and we'll get this working as soon as we can.
And before we leave, I'll leave you with one last thing that I think you guys appreciate. Mayor Moran last year started a regular conversation with our neighbors to the east, and Andy and I have committed to keep that dialogue going in the next couple of months, every couple of months. We used to do it all the time.
Yeah.
So we re-instituted that because of the fact we know, and it kind of constituted from a subdivision they were building, where we wanted connectivity to theirs, and they were standing in front of us, those neighborhoods, complaining about cut-through traffic. And we went, uh, excuse me? So, we're not letting it lie, and so, yeah, we are accelerating those conversations to reroute their traffic coming through our city, when they stood in front of us and complained about potentially our traffic going through their neighborhood.
Right, and we, you guys did exactly what they wanted to do.
We're not sitting back even after those traffic installation things.
Duly noted. And Mark had indicated possibly there would be a time where we would need representation at an El Dorado County City Council meeting, which we would, I mean, just you say the word, and we will, I'll rally the troops, and we'll be there, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you, council.
I appreciate it. Thank you for bringing to our attention. And again, we apologize for the misstep in the programming. Okay, call the next person, please.
You have no more speakers tonight under business from the floor?
Okay, so next item?
Your next item is tonight's consent calendar.
Excuse me. I have items for...
Oh.
Did we miss a card?
I'm sorry, I didn't have a card for you. Come on up.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So please give us your name.
All right, I'm Madison Ryan. I'm a senior at Vista Del Lago.
Oh, good evening.
And it's funny, I had no idea that the former speaker was coming, and my subject is very similar to his regarding parking in the roads around Vista. So, I would like to bring to your attention that the school parking at Folsom, it's an atrocity. I know this personally from my own peers and experiences at my school, Vista Del Lago, as I've said. The parking lot there holds at best a couple hundred people. The population of my school, however, consists of over 1,700 students and growing. Any parking in the nearby neighborhoods, as we said, is either ridiculously far or nonexistent. To me, it seems highly impractical for the students to commonly say that they'd need a ride to their car every day after school. On top of that, simply getting to the school in the mornings and afternoons is nightmare material. The cars almost stack upon each other up golf links and into the school, leading to frustrating and untreatable traffic congestion. Not only are these conditions a hindrance, they're a danger. Being packed together in such tight spaces is a risk to the drivers in both the horrendously undersized drop-off and to the drivers in the lots and surrounding neighborhoods. Folsom has acquired a legendary folk tale, the nightmare of the Vista Del Lago parking lot, and I personally would not like to keep it. If young people are going to strengthen their driving abilities and be at low risk to everyone else, the parking problem must be annihilated. I say these things with such fervor, because congesting neighborhood streets is not only a risk to the safe, to their safety, but a leech to their well-being. The students lose much-needed sleep just to be able to get up at ungodly hours in the attempt to win a spot, and when they do, they're constantly nervous, because their cars are in danger of getting damaged and possibly towed, because the parking they find is so tight and uncertain. This problem persists beyond the borders of my school as well and to the infrastructure around it. To achieve aesthetic, the roads have sacrificed functionality. They are impractically tiny, choked with cars at every busy hour. Not only does this make commute dreadful, they're also a huge risk to the safety of the drivers and the pedestrians. Every day, I drive past some new accident or some new traffic block. Every day, I hear a new gaggle of students avoiding leaving the school because of the driving nightmare that is Vista Del Lago. And the students are not the only ones affected, as we have seen. The nearby housing developments are packed with cars, making navigation in the area an extreme bother on the residents. Every blank stretch of curb is used for parking, and in an already crowded neighborhood, this parking problem smothers everyone living there. My school is unavoidably placed on top of a hill, but why are the roads and parking there already harder than they have to be? The empty land around golf links and the neighboring streets should be used to make new road, or to at least expand existing ones. I see no purpose for this land to be empty, other than the fact that aesthetic has overruled functionality. And as for parking, there are empty lots of land all around the campus, both by golf links and more off to the side near the stadium. Funding for these projects should be prioritized to improve Vista Del Lago and the areas around it, and minimize the fears, frustration, and dangers found in the drivers there. Thank you.
You know, that was very good, so congratulations. So, please, 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 make that presentation to the school board as well.
I will.
Just because anything on their property has to come from them.
Okay.
But I think that was an excellent presentation, and our next two-by-two that we have at City Hall with them, once a month, this Thursday, then Vice Mayor Sheldon will bring it up to them.
All right, thank you very much.
Very good, so thank you.
Have a nice day.
That was very good. We should have her Thursday. Thank you. Okay, so, call the next item?
Next is your consent calendar.
Okay, so anybody wishing to pull anything off consent?
I'll move items A through H.
Okay.
I'll check in it.
I've got a motion of Councilmember Moran and Second Vice Mayor Sheldon. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. Call next item, please.
Next tonight is your one public hearing item. This is regarding Russell Ranch Lots 24 to 32, subdivision with project number 17288. You have resolution number 10,092 and ordinance number 1282 for introduction and first reading.
Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Steve Banks, Community Development Department. The project before you this evening is the Russell Ranch Lots 24 through 32 subdivision. The applicant's requesting a number of entitlements, including a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, a vesting small-lot tentative subdivision map, a large-lot tentative subdivision map, modification to the existing design guidelines, and lastly, an amendment to the development agreement, in fact, amendment number two. Russell Ranch is located in eastern portion of the Folsom Plan Area, as outlined in red on the aerial photograph before you. The project before you this evening comprised, is comprised of villages three and four of Russell Ranch, which is grown in the crosshatched area in the bottom right corner of the screen. Just to give you a little bit of refresher and background on the Russell Ranch subdivision project, which has been before you a number of times over the years. When the Folsom Plan Area was originally approved in 2011, the area known as Russell Ranch currently was allocated 1,143 residential units. Moving forward a number of years, the council approved a number of entitlements in 2015, in which 828 residential lots were actually mapped on the 437-acre project site. A year later, the applicant received approval from the city council for modifications to the previous subdivision maps, and approval for 903 residential units, including 852 lots which were mapped. As you're aware, the construction of the backbone improvements in the plan area began earlier last year, and there's been substantial progress over the course of last year in regards to those improvements. The large-lot map for Russell Ranch was approved in the fall of last year, and the applicant is making modifications to that map with this particular application. I'll walk you through the key details of the proposal this evening. As I referenced, they're seeking approval of a general plan amendment to redesignate land uses within this particular area. They're also looking to make boundary adjustments in terms of the allocation of the land uses within this area. There's a table before you on the screen, and I want to call your attention to the first three lines of the table, because this is where most of the changes are occurring. In terms of single-family residential-zoned land, we currently have 33.9 acres. They're removing that with this proposal. A majority of that land is being re-designated from single-family to single-family high-density, as you'll see on the second line of the chart. And lastly, the applicant is proposing to introduce multifamily low-density property at 11.9 acres within the project boundaries. Those are the three most important facets of the general plan amendment. In terms of the specific plan amendment, the applicant's proposing to, again, adjust the boundary lines to match the general plan boundary lines as proposed, and they are also requesting approval to increase overall allocation of residential units within the plan area by 124. So they're seeking to increase the residential allocation from 11,337 up to 11,461 with this proposal. The applicant is also seeking approval of a large-lot vesting tentative subdivision map to subdivide the 135-acre project site into fifteen individual parcels. A majority of those are single-family residential in nature and also open space. The applicant's seeking approval of a small-lot vesting tentative subdivision map to create 389 residential lots within the project area. Over half of those are designated for an active adult community, in fact, 207 units allocated for an active adult community. 118 units are designated for a townhome community, with the remainder, 64 units, being allocated towards traditional single-family lots. The applicant is proposing to amend the existing design guidelines to address the active adult community and the recreational facility, and create standards for those facilities. And lastly, the applicant's seeking amendment number two to the development agreement, which addresses the city corporation yard, the high school relocation, as well as the exclusionary housing agreement, and the connector project. This is the site plan submitted by the project applicant. If you'll notice, Empire Ranch Road goes from north to the south and bisects the project site. You have White Rock Road to the south being the southern boundary, the Folsom Heights subdivision being the boundary to the east, as well as the El Dorado County line. And to the west, you have White Rock Springs Ranch subdivision. The active adult community, which I referenced earlier, is all located on the eastern side of Empire Ranch Road, and is proposed to be a private gated community. I'd also note, there's a private recreational amenity over an acre in size that's proposed to serve residents of the active adult community. Crossing to the west side of Empire Ranch Road, you'll see this triangular-shaped piece of land. This is where the townhome community is proposed, and to the west of that, these are where your traditional single-family lots will be located adjacent to the White Rock Springs Ranch subdivision. This is the project overlaid with the overall Russell Ranch site plan. So again, the proposal this evening deals with villages three and four in the bottom right, and the upper left, these are villages one and two, which have previously been approved by the city council. As I've referenced, they're seeking approval of a general plan amendment, as well as a specific plan amendment. On the left are the existing general plan land use designations. As you'll see, the most notable change is you've lost the single-family designations and replaced it with single-family high-density in the graphic on the right, and we also have the introduction of a multifamily land use designation in the triangular piece of property at this location. The intent of the applicant in requesting approval of a general plan amendment and the specific plan amendment is to address two specific needs within the city of Folsom. One is the lack of housing, which is considered age-restricted or intended for residents over 55 years in age, and secondly, to introduce a townhome-style product, which will be aimed at the millennials and a different segment of our population in the city. In evaluating this proposal, we thought we'd share some information with you regarding the existing housing stock and demographic information regarding the city of Folsom. the existing housing stock and demographic information regarding the city of Folsom. In terms of the existing housing stock within the city, we have approximately 27,000 dwelling units currently within the city of Folsom. Of those 27,000 units, only 1,100, actually 1,103, are dedicated specifically for senior residents. Of those 1,100 units, only 150 are focused on owner-occupied active adults. And that's a subdivision located on Sibley Street, near Glen Drive, and that represents 0.5% of the housing stock in the city of Folsom. On top of that, we have a little under 800 multifamily units, either townhome units or condominium units in the city of Folsom currently, and that represents only 3% of the current housing stock within the city. Now, if we move down and look at the demographic information, it's a little dated, it's from the 2010 census, you'll see that almost 15,000 residents in the city of Folsom are over the age of 55. So that's 20% of our population is over the age of 55, yet we've only dedicated 4% of our housing stock to serve those particular residents. In addition, we have about 18,000 millennials in the city of Folsom, which represents about 25% of our population. And as you see on the graphic, 3% of the housing stock is aimed at townhomes and condominiums, which are a prime target for folks in that particular age range. The applicant will be giving a little more information on demographic trends, which are currently ongoing within the city, but I can say that the number of residents within the 55-plus category is increasing in the city of Folsom, as well as the residents in the millennium category. Both those categories are increasing in the city of Folsom. And again, the applicant and one of their team members will speak on that a little further on in the presentation. So in summary, it's apparent that we have a shortage of age-restricted housing to serve our residents, and that we also have a shortage in multifamily townhome condominium-style housing within the city. When the applicant was submitted to city staff, we had a number of concerns, and specifically, the applicant was requesting approval to increase the number of units within the plan area by 124. And so our question to the applicant was, what are the impacts of adding 124 units to the Folsom Plan Area? So I've listed in bullet points here some of the highlights of our analysis of the increase in 124 units. In terms of measured W open space, this project does not change the measured W open space acreage, and in fact, the applicant is adding additional landscaped area, roughly 12 additional acres of landscaped area, which is not measured W open space area, but it's additional open space area for landscaping purposes. In terms of bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, the applicant is proposing to add additional trails within their project, as well as additional trail connections above and beyond what was originally approved. In terms of traffic impacts, a supplemental traffic analysis was prepared for this project, and it determined that this project would actually lead to a decrease in vehicle trips on a daily basis, as well as in the AM and PM peak hours. With respect to water usage, there's a slight increase in water usage with this project, but still well within the allotment for water usage within the Folsom Plan Area. There'd be a slight increase in population, roughly 50% increase in population with this proposal. With respect to schools, the school demand and impact would be less, specifically because of the active adult community. I would note, though, that the applicant still is paying impact fees to the school district at a reduced rate, but they still are paying impact fees for those active adult units, even though they are not producing students that would impact the schools in the plan area. In terms of housing, they are introducing two new product types that are underrepresented within the city. And lastly, in terms of park impacts, the applicant is proposing two amenities, private park amenities, within their project, which would lead to a decrease in public park usage and impacts within the plan area. Traffic access and circulation, as I referenced a little earlier, a supplemental traffic analysis was prepared for this project, and it determined that there would be less vehicle trips with this proposal than with their prior project approval, and it determined there would be no new impacts that weren't previously identified and addressed within the original Folsom Plan Area EIR EAS, as well as the Russell Ranch environmental impact report. The applicant will be required to construct their site improvements, and they will be obligated to pay their fair share of impact fees for improvements that are off-site, as well as north of Highway 50. I mentioned a little earlier, the applicant's proposing some trail and connections and trail enhancements. On the left side of the graphic is the existing trail systems that approve the project area. On the right side is the proposed trail system for the project area in a pink color adjacent to the active adult community. You see a new trail connection from north to south, and also a new trail connection from Empire Ranch Road east. And then we'll also have a number of additional trail connections, specifically one at the end of the cul-de-sac, as I'm pointing at here on the western portion of the site. And then in the eastern portion of the site, there's an additional trail connection proposed to the Folsom Heights subdivision. Lastly, there's also a trail connection proposed east near this new trail connection. I also learned late this afternoon, and I should preface this, at the planning commission meeting, which occurred in February, the planning commission asked the applicant to investigate the possibility of providing an additional pedestrian connection along the western boundary of the project site, generally in this area. The applicant indicated they have been in contact with the property owner for White Rock Springs Ranch and have reached an agreement where an additional pedestrian connection will be provided from the project site at this location, kind of right in the middle of the triangle there. So I wanted to share that, that new information with you. So that would be a new trail connection. An addendum to the Folsom Plan Area EIR EAS and the Russell Ranch EIR was prepared for this project. No new impacts were identified through the preparation of this addendum. The environmental consultant is here this evening. If you have any specific technical questions regarding that document. As I noted, the planning commission reviewed this project in February, had a very healthy discussion regarding a number of issues associated with the proposed project, was very supportive of the project concept. I would note there was one member of the public who spoke regarding the project and voiced their support for the project. This person represented the Chamber of Commerce, and they voiced their support for the project. No other members of the public spoke regarding the project. The planning commission did adopt a motion five to one to recommend approval of the project to the city council. I would note that the one member of the planning commission who voted no on the project did think the project was a good project. However, he had concerns that the applicant did not demonstrate a significant community benefit in terms of approving the general plan amendment and the specific plan amendment. So in summary, something for you to think about as you deliberate this project. I brought up general plan land use goal two and one of those policies, which I think is very pertinent to the subject application. And policy 2.3 states that general plan amendments may be approved when the applicant has successfully indicated substantial benefit could be derived from the project. And in staff's analysis, we believe there's substantial benefit in providing an active adult community for the plan area and for the city of Folsom, as well as introducing a multifamily townhome product. Both of these product types are currently well underserved within the city of Folsom currently. In our opinion, we think those represent substantial benefits to the plan area, as well as the community as a whole. And with that, staff respectfully forwards the planning commission recommendation for approval of the project. The applicant also has a few words they would like to share with you this evening, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Any questions for Steve before we bring up the applicant? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Miklos and members of the city council. My name is Bonnie Chu. I'm with The New Home Company. We're a home builder here in the Sacramento region, building in various parts of the region, including Davis and Sacramento, and looking forward to our next venture here in Folsom, and has historically built here in Folsom and the Parkway and in other parts of the city. I want to first introduce the team behind me here that is here to answer any questions should they come up. We've Martha Lofgren, our land use counsel, as well as Jim and Donna from McCann-Somps. Greg Pakwin is here from the Gregory Group, who's going to follow me with some brief remarks on market demand and demographics. And then we have Mark Stacy, who's our Vice President of Ford Planning and Land Development. And so they're here should there be any questions on those areas of expertise. I want to make just a few brief remarks before Greg Pakwin comes up. First, I want to thank staff for their diligence in reviewing and processing our application since our submitted last August. We've been working very hard with various departments to get the plan right and to this current place. We revised the Russell Ranch project, this part of the Russell Ranch project, for a couple of key reasons. One, as Steve mentioned already, Phase Four was a portion of this part of the project that's before you, that was carved out due to the alignment of the connector not being in an solid place back in 2015. That is now settled, and our plan, our site design accommodates that alignment. Also, we wanted to examine Phase Three and Four holistically, and so based on market research, based on comments that we've actually heard from Mayor Miklos on the need for active adult housing, as well as the desire to diversify housing types in Russell Ranch and within Folsom, we decided to pursue a site plan that included townhomes that Steve Banks mentioned that will be geared towards, and Greg will get a little bit more into this, but geared towards first-time home buyers and actually, we believe, baby boomers as well. We've had a lot of success in some of other communities in the Sacramento area with townhomes that were the first product type to sell out, from a price point standpoint, as well as the type of low-maintenance lifestyle that it provides. The active adult is a key reason for the unit change as well, and is part of the proposal. And so, looking forward to Greg Pakwin's remarks on the desirability and the low supply in Folsom and even the general region. Thank you to Steve for bringing you up to speed on the planning commission's request from a couple weeks ago to improve the plan by adding an east-west bike-ped connection. We've been working diligently with the White Rock Springs Ranch developer and glad to come to resolution in terms of design and cost considerations that we've been working through over these past two weeks, and looking forward to be able to incorporate that and making that a win-win for everyone. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Justin Reifel, excuse me, to Greg Pakwin, and then Martha Lofgren is going to make some closing remarks.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name's Greg Pakwin. I'm with a company called the Gregory Group. We do market research and feasibility and survey new home projects throughout the, actually the state of California. We spend a lot of time in Northern California. We've been working in Sacramento region since 99. I've been involved in this industry for a little bit longer than that. It used to be good to say 20 years, now when it's 30 years, I'm not so sure. So one of the things that we do, we've done a lot of work more recently, especially on active adult communities, actually throughout Northern California, coastal as well as inland communities. And when specifically looking at Sacramento region, there are currently only five active adult projects, and that's 55 years or older that can live there. And most of those, there's a couple, there's one in El Dorado Hills, and the rest are out of the area. And in fact, in the city of Folsom in particular, there's been one, as mentioned earlier, there's been one project that was built in 1999 by Dunmore Homes, Diamond Glen, I believe it's called. And I looked today, and there's only two listings in that community today. And those homes don't stay on the market very long. I forget the actual days on market, but I think it's even less than the 30 days that Folsom has in general. So very popular in terms of just what's available now. So when we look at, when we look at what's available here locally, but also in other areas, you know, there's three types of housing that are becoming more and more popular in the region, and that's single-story living, single-story homes, it's a single-story living on two-story homes, so either a master down or extra bedrooms downstairs, and then there's multi-generational living. All three are becoming, actually, in some cases, you can get a price premium for this type of product in different market areas. And the reason that that's important today throughout the region, and in Folsom in particular, is because of this slide right here. So what we've done is we've taken the population estimates by the Department of Finance and said, what's going to happen over the next 10 years, and where's the growth going to be? And if you look at the, it's a phenomenon that we call the first time-last phenomenon. So the millennial generation, let's say the 25 to 44-year-old group, over the next 10 years will increase by 100, approximately 100,000 people, and that's about a 15%, 16% growth rate, even, which is pretty substantial, especially when you look at the middle section, 45 to 64. But then when you look at 65 and greater over the next 10 years, that's going to grow by 170,000 people, 45% astronomical numbers, and it's happening throughout the state of California. It's the baby boomer generation, it's the millennial generation. And what's interesting is what these buyers are asking for in terms of product and communities. You know, we mentioned the single-story type of living and so forth, but what the communities are also asking for things, Steve did a good job kind of summarizing some of these points that we see in the market every day when we're out there in the field, and those are things like the community focus, and the trails, and the clubhouses, and the biking, and the focus on, specific to active adult, the privacy, the quiet. These folks have, a lot of these folks have grown up raising their kids in homes that they bought 10, 20 years ago, 25 to 3,500 square feet, and now their kids are gone, and they're ready to downsize. They don't need such a big house. They want less maintenance, they want less yard space, they want living that's more easy and convenient, and different designs, frankly. There's new product designs that we're seeing. And so these type of active adult age-restricted communities that we are seeing throughout this region and throughout Northern California meet that need to a greater degree. Also, it meets a need for, surprisingly, this need, this first-time-last, you know, the age-restricted active adult community obviously goes for the older baby boom generation, but then you've also got this millennial group that a lot of times they're away, they go to school, they come back, they want to live in midtown or downtown, and they do. And then they find they get a little bit older, and they get a little bit tired of the congestion, the not being able to park, the costs, and they get, they have a boyfriend or girlfriend, and they get married, and they start to have kids, and they say, well, what am I familiar with? Where do I want to go? And they tend to go back to communities that they were raised in, and they're looking for housing in those communities. And a lot of times, they can certainly rent in some of these communities, but a lot of times, there's not available product to meet their needs at that point in time. And that's one of the things that, when we say urban living in suburban locations, that's one of the things that townhome product does in meeting that need. It's affordable, it offers new plans that people, that millennials like, and they're really, they're really community-focused. You know, they like having the community around them and then going, having a dinner party at the pub, you know, and all of those type of environments. And so those are becoming, townhome communities throughout the state are becoming very popular for those reasons. The surprising thing that we found over the last year or two is that that's not just where it used to be, but it's not anymore just a millennial or a young first-time buyer type of product. It's becoming more, as there are so many baby boomers, it's becoming a product type that an older generation likes as well. And again, they like, remember too, the townhome product now is designed and built and constructed as a single store, as, excuse me, as a single-family-type detached product. It's very similar, you know, in terms of indoor-outdoor space, and livability, and great rooms, and functionality, and all those positive factors. So you have an aging baby boomer that likes to live in that community because they like the integration of the community, they like the way that it's secure and attached, and it melds out into the community and interacts throughout the whole community. So we've seen in our studies, in Folsom in particular, but also throughout all of the greater Sacramento region and Northern California, that these two types of product are becoming more in demand, especially driven by the demographics that we're seeing that are pretty substantial at this point in time.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Turn that on. No brains, no headaches.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Martha Lofgren, Brewer Lofgren, representing The New Home Company this evening. I wanted to close with some comments about the context of this being a request for a general plan amendment and a specific plan amendment, because we realize that's not just a check-the-box kind of a land use request. We're still early in the process of developing the Folsom South Plan Area, although there's some significant roadwork going on, there's no people living down there yet, and so New Home Company is coming back early in the process, asking for some reconsideration of the type of housing product that they're able to offer to the community. Steve Banks really did an outstanding job of providing an overview, but one point that he touched on, I wanted to highlight, most of the council members are aware of this, and Councilmember Gaylord was not on the city council when this project initially came through, but there are approved land use plans for part of this project. So what we've always called Phase Three has an approved land use plan on it. It's single- It's single-family homes. The part that was called Phase Four, which is down close to the connector, had some lots allocated to it, but there is no approved land use plan. But if the City Council elected to do nothing tonight or not to move this forward, there are single-family homes that will be built, and we'd have to come back later with a Phase Four map. So, what I really want to focus on is what is New Home Company bringing forward that's different or better than those single-family homes, because I think that's really the question that's in front of you. You've heard a lot of information tonight about the market demand for both active adult and for town home product, and I won't go into that again because I think both Mr. Pakwin and Steve Banks have given you a very good background on why that product is needed within the city of Folsom. I would add, as a Folsom resident, that I think diversity matters, and we would be attracting a diverse population by having different housing product available. Another advantage that you're getting out of this project, if it is approved, if the general plan and specific plan amendments are approved, are additional trail connections. So, under the existing plan, if New Home were to move forward with their current Phase Three, there are several internal trail connections that would not be constructed. And also, the trail connection that leads now over from the Russell Ranch project through Greg Ranch would not be built. There is a road under the current plan that would go over, but kids who would be going from Russell Ranch over to the elementary school that's on the Greg Ranch side would have to ride their bikes on the road. With the very outstanding cooperation of Michael McDonald with Greg Ranch, now there will be a trail that will be constructed, and so the kids will be able to go on a bike path. And we have to compliment the Planning Commission on that because, in particular, the Chair, Justin Rithel, was persistent, calling me even up to Friday, you know, to find out what the status of that was. New Home was working very hard to make it happen. We've also made reference, and Steve Banks made reference, to the fact that school impact fees will still be paid on the active adult units. It is at a lower rate, and that's not a rate that the New Home Company negotiated as a special favor from the school district, it's a rate that's established by the school district. And so, it's the commercial rate that is paid on the active adult homes. Another point that I'd like to mention is that we did, after getting some questions from some of the council members, we did go back and look at the financing plan to see if this mix of housing units was going to somehow adversely affect the financing plan. And I know you'd probably want to hear from your finance director on this, but our conclusion is that it doesn't result in a reduction of any funding, and in fact, looks like there's some additional funding that would be coming forth to the city from changing that mix. I think most importantly too, when you talk about the town home product, it is a product that's not generally available in the city right now. And for those of us who hear the presentations by the economic development consultants in the region, and particularly Barry Broom, who's the CEO of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, they talk about having different housing products as an economic development attractor. And so, when companies like Amazon look at cities they want to go to, they're looking at the type of housing that millennials and employees that work in that industry typically want to live in. And I have a daughter who lives now in West Sacramento, and I know they have town homes in West Sacramento because I drive past them. I know that they have them in Sacramento at McKinley Village because New Home Company built them and they sold out. I know that they have them in the city of Davis because New Home Company has had a role in construction of those and they sold out. We don't have those readily available in the city of Folsom, and we think that's a factor with respect to economic development. So, those townhomes are located down on the bottom of that, what we used to call Phase Four. And again, without this general plan amendment going forward, that would not be approved. With respect to the increase in the number of units, again, we respect very much the City Council's careful deliberation in creating a unit count in the specific plan, and we don't think it's a matter of just erasing the number and by any convenience, just filling in a new one. Really, it has to be thoughtful, and I think the critical point to focus on here, I would ask that you think about, is whether that unit count, the number of people it translates into, and most importantly, what are the environmental impacts. And New Home Company's Russell Ranch project is the only development project south of Highway 50 that had a full EIR on their project. The others relied on perfectly valid under CEQA, but other addenda or other manner to not have to do a full EIR. Well, New Home Company was the first one out of the gates, so they did a full EIR. They now have an addendum based on that full EIR. And the conclusion of the addendum, and the environmental consultant is here if you have questions, is that there are no new environmental impacts. In fact, in some very significant cases, the environmental impacts go down. So, on traffic, there is an increase in people because, but because many of these people are seniors, they don't drive during the rush hour period, the traffic impacts actually go down. The water impact goes up slightly by two acre-feet per year, and that's actually using a more conservative number on persons per household on active adult than what most other jurisdictions use. The city used a number that derived from the city of Galt, which was higher. We didn't object to that, but there are, Placer County, where they have a lot of senior living communities, has a lower, and if you use that number, it would have been only 13 people added. So, and no increase in water impacts. So, we think on the environmental side, again, while it's important to look at the unit count, we also have to add on to that an analysis of whether the environmental impacts are increased. With those factors in mind, we think the New Home Company has submitted and has demonstrated to the city that there is a benefit from this project. It's not just in the addition of new housing type, which we agree is, and submit is a benefit, but the addition of the trails, the addition of a specific pedestrian bikeway access that will take the kids to the school. You've also heard about the private recreation facility, both an internal park and for the active adults, and that's an amenity, especially for the seniors that will be south of 50. That's really a first of its kind of any of the developers bringing forward. Based on those factors, we would ask for your support of the project tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, as I know the rest of the team are. We have everyone here and happy to help with any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Martha this time?
I just want to reiterate, I've met with the developers three times, I believe, and one of the times when you mentioned the over 55, which I'm way over 55, the thing that struck me was the community center that you were going to build within there, and I did ask if you would consider the other seniors that will eventually be south of 50, if maybe we can work an accommodation of the city senior center, have a day or so during the month to have the seniors that are not in that, in the actual home to have utilization, because I'm sure those seniors will go out of their area to talk to other seniors. And you expressed the opinion that they would, so I hope that would stay valid.
Yes, I can express the opinion, and also, we can ask Bonnie to come back up and address that if you'd like. The answer is yes.
Well, now Bonnie doesn't need to come up here, then.
No. Well, I was just going to say that we'd be happy to-
We'd like to see Bonnie, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We're continuing to talk about the potential for joint programming and how that could work between the HOA and the city.
Good.
Definitely.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Because we do have a couple of requests to speak. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open on this item. I think we have two requests, so City Clerk, mention those, call those people up.
You do. Your first speaker will be Justin Rithel, and Justin will be followed by Will Kempton.
Mayor Miklos, honorable council members, you know I don't often come to City Council. I feel like you guys can often view the tape of Planning Commission and see the fun discussions that we get into. But since there was a little moving piece on this, I just wanted to kind of give some background so you guys understood where that pedestrian connection-
If I may, Justin, I want to introduce to the audience, you are the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, I just want to give you a little background. With the increased density in the southern portion of the project, that roadway connection was actually moved to the south that you saw, that was down there. And before, all of those kids that could live in the multifamily, low-density, or those single-family houses that are in there, they would have just taken that roadway connection that was there, but that roadway connection was shifted south, so there wouldn't be a cut-through that was there. So, it was kind of a follow-on effect. And when we looked at it, the idea behind it was we kind of forced the cars out to Empire Ranch Road, which makes a lot of sense. But what we were also doing was we were forcing those kids that could live in the neighborhood out to Empire Ranch Road to get to their school and that big community park that's right there, that's north of that subdivision. And so, that was my big concern, and some other planning commissioners also felt like it was of concern. We did ask them to work on it, and we did get the call today that they had come to an agreement with White Rock Springs Ranch. We didn't condition the project on it because we weren't sure how the other landowner was going to deal with it. So, the one person that didn't vote for the project, it did express that he would vote for the project if they were willing to condition their project on it, but I didn't feel like that was appropriate since we had, we didn't have any agreement from the neighboring landowner, and I didn't want to make it more difficult. I figured they still, we still had a couple of weeks to work on it before it made it to you guys. So, we probably would have gotten unanimous that evening had we conditioned the project on it, but I think we got there in the end. Obviously, there's a lot of other things to consider with this project. Be happy to answer any questions you guys have about that, but I just wanted to give you a little more background on that and thank New Home Company and their team for working to give a better solution for the kids that are going to live in that community.
Okay. Any questions for Justin this time?
No, I want to comment. Excuse me. Anytime you can keep the kids off of main thoroughfare, which increases the hazard, if you can have cut-through, and most of it, in the park system, we like to have the adjacent schools and that. The roads are dangerous sometimes, and the kids are kids. So, I think that was a good suggestion on your part, and I'm glad they accommodated.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Great. Okay, thank you, Justin.
Thank you all.
Okay, next is Will Kempton, and Will will be followed by Joe Galliardi.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Will Kempton, Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission and also a member of the active adult community in Folsom. Although, being a member of that community, I'm not here to speak on the density question, but to also talk about the bike-ped connection. When this issue was moving through the process, it was determined not to, there was no need to bring it to the Park and Rec Commission because there was virtually no impact on the park dedication or impact fees. And so, it did go before the Planning Commission, as Chair Rithel has indicated. And I really want to commend the Chair of the Planning Commission for actually calling me directly to ask about this issue with the bike-and-ped connector, because we had not taken that into consideration. I agreed totally with the analysis that the Commission, the Planning Commission made with respect to that particular issue. And although the Park and Recreation Commission has not taken an official position on this, I'm sure they would agree and have no problem with recognizing the point, Councilmember Sheldon, that you just made, keeping kids on a bike-and-ped type of a connection as opposed to out on main streets is something that makes a lot of sense. So, I also had some contacts with the New Home representatives and was very pleased that they had undertaken a collaborative effort with the developer, the White Rock Springs Ranch developers, to come to a solution where they will provide for that connection. We think that that is a good practice and we're very supportive of that element of the deal. But again, I also want to commend Chairman Rithol for his contacting the Park Commission. I think it is a good demonstration of working together as commissions, and you expect that from us, and I think that was a good example of it.
I agree. Any questions?
So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or otherwise.
Question for Will? Great, thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Next is Joe Galliardi.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Joe Galliardi, representing the Greater Folsom Partnership. I wanted to come here on a couple different, from a couple different perspectives. First and foremost, as Martha alluded to, the diversity of housing is really in short supply in Folsom, especially from an economic development standpoint, to have something that first-time buyers can get into with a type of product that isn't readily available right now in the community. Secondly, as an active adult and somebody that actually did downsize, I can tell you that there is a lack of for-sale product of this kind, and it would be nice to have an active adult in this community. And thirdly, I'd like to encourage everyone, if they have a chance, to watch Folsom Focus. This week's edition of Folsom Focus really has to do with housing. Greg Pakwin is interviewed in that, in which he talks about not only the demand for housing, but on how the price structure, how existing houses are going to rise as a result of the developments that are occurring. So, with that, I'd just like to lend my support to the project.
Okay. Any questions for Joe? Okay, this is a public hearing. That's all the requests we have to speak. If anybody else wishing to come forward, please do so. It's a public hearing. See, no other person's coming forward. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll go ahead and have our deliberations. So, who'd like to start? Roger? If you'd like to lead him forward.
First of all, I appreciate everyone's work on this, staff, the applicant, Justin Rithol, or Planning Commissioner Rithol and everyone who spoke. My issue, I have a lot of notes here, but my issue is the amendments themselves to the general plan and the specific plan. I don't necessarily know that the benefits outweigh the actual amendments, so I guess that's kind of where I'm at at this point. I don't know if we can talk about that.
Yeah, go ahead and lead off if you want.
It's just, to me, when I look at this, I mean, the housing market's hot no matter where we go. An active adult community isn't enticive, it doesn't entice, although I agree that diversity is important. And, you know, I'm of the millennial age, I guess you would say. So, we could change the density of the housing and put that project in there, but I don't think the benefits of making those specific amendments to the general plan and the specific plan set in that precedence, it doesn't sit well with me, and I don't think it sits well with a lot of residents. So, the fear is, is we go from 11,000 to 20,000 real quick, you know, because one project at a time, we keep making these changes, and that's where we're at.
Okay. Angie?
Yeah, I'll jump in. So, those of you who've heard me up here for a number of years now know that whenever we try and, you know, start moving the line in the sand as far as this dwelling count, and, you know, I think to Roger's point, there's this concern that, you know, although I'm not bothered by anything I've heard here this evening on its own, standing on its own. In the grand scheme of things, it's not large, and, you know, I think we've gone over, I think every time you go through an iteration of changing plans, you do learn things along the way, and things get better in a lot of ways. But as I've shared in the past couple of years, we've had this pressure, I feel, on us as a council. It seems like a lot of times, the unit count keeps going up, and I just get concerned about, you know, that incremental approach to, you know, we have this dwelling count number, and then we call it a cap, but it never seems to be capped. And so, I really kind of wonder about the purpose of it. But my real base concern is, is again, not this specific project, but as we move along, if, you know, we keep adding 100 here, 100 there, we based our financing plan, done years ago by a number of us council members, on an estimate at that time of a unit count. And as this moves along, there's two pieces to that financing. There's the impact fee, infrastructure piece. I believe that's easily captured because if we add units, we're adding impact fee to build more or larger parks, you know, whatever that might be. But what really concerns me, again, as we get this, kind of this planned population creep, is way down the road, is operations. It's no secret that the 12% of the property tax that people pay is all we get at the city of Folsom to operate our city. So, that's augmented by sales tax and other things that contribute to the general fund. And that's my concern is that we, there are other things that support the expected service levels for future residents of the city of Folsom. So, that, I just kind of wanted to, you know, I've shared this before, and I do, I just get concerned that we're going to keep feeling this pressure. There's a lot of land down there. You know, we have a great base plan with, you know, again, tremendous amount of open space that most communities in the region don't even approach. But, you know, that is something, and, you know, I shared this with the applicants- But, you know, that is something, and, you know, I shared this with the applicant representatives earlier today, and, you know, I don't think it was a surprise, they know me and have heard me mention this before. You know, just a few other points, things that I wrote down here, you know, again, concerns that might be more loosely related. You know, you mentioned the school impact fees makes perfectly logical sense, but I do worry that this disparity, almost the savings in impact fees for senior housing, might again build pressure on us to almost overbuild this. So, you know, I agree with everything I saw, that it's underserved in Folsom right now. But that'd just be a cautionary thing, I believe, for myself, is that there seems to be a benefit financially, profitability-wise, to build this stuff, because there's a piece of impact fee that doesn't need to get paid. So I think that's not a bad thing, that there's incentive to do that, but, you know, it could be kind of overdone. The one thing that I heard that, you know, I think we have to be really clear, is that, you know, 20% of Folsom is, you know, in this age, but we only have 5% of our housing. Well, you know, not everybody wants to live. Everybody who's, the senior activity folks wants to live in that sort of product. So, you know, we don't need to make that comparison, but again, I agree that it's underserved at this point. You know, and that's about all the notes I have on this. And I'll tell you, this has been, this has been one of the tougher ones for me. You know, a lot of times, you get pretty sure of yourself as you're presented with votes that we take up here. You know, I suppose something I would like to see at some point, maybe in the near future, is, you know, what as a council, you know, what are we going to continue to accept as what I consider, you know, major changes to some things that were established, basically with, you know, the trust of the community. We went through, you know, Mayor Miklos has been involved in this even longer than I have, where, you know, the development of this property goes way back. We went through a lot of community planning on this, and we need to make sure we maintain the trust of the community on this. So we can't do this too much. We really can't. It looks, the appearance can look very devious. And I'm not saying this is devious at all. It's not. But the accumulation of this just looks like, you know, a little bit of bait-and-switch sort of stuff. My one, I remember, you know, a previous increase in population for a section of the development down there, pointed to this development as they had lowered their housing count, so, you know, everything's all good. Well, now, you know, New Home Company comes back, and again, don't blame you for, you know, looking for something that really works for that company. But you can imagine the position I'm in, where, you know, it's the fingers pointing over there, and then it's pointing over here. So we need to be, again, very careful as a council to make sure we don't get, you know, some of this assumption by landowners down there, that this is just an easy thing to do. You know what? If we add a couple hundred here, they've done it before. So that's my big, big concern. So I'm going to try and figure out a way to make sure that it's, you know, something that, you know, really needs something very exceptional to get beyond these numbers, because we started out at, what, I don't know, 10,100 units. That went up significantly when we really did those major changes. We reduced some of the commercial, we, the Country Day School property down there got rezoned to housing. So I get that. But, you know, I'll stop there. But I am of the mind to support this. But, you know, gosh, this gets harder and harder for me, and I think it gets harder and harder for the community to see this happening in a repetitive fashion. So for staff, I would ask that the next major landowner down there that comes forward with adding unit counts, please share with them that there's one council member that's really getting tired of this, and it would just, it's really going to need something, some overwhelmingly, overwhelming arguments to convince me that we need to keep doing this because the demographics are different. Because my answer is going to start to be, that's fine. Build what works, but don't add to the unit counts. Because that's one of the, you know, the very simple answers we could even give to this project. But again, I don't want to undermine what I see as a lot of good, careful work to try and contend with one whining council member. But, you know, I just want to emphasize that it's important that we maintain the trust of the community going forward, and we don't continue to let this unit count creep beyond what I believe could create difficulty from a service standpoint, servicing these new residents in the city of Folsom. So thanks for allowing me to take a little bit extra time there, Mr. Mayor. But anyway, again, I appreciate all the, you know, I have no complaints about, you know, what was put before us, and, you know, thanks, staff. Every question I had was really answered in the staff report. So I appreciate the thoroughness. That always helps us, you know, to make decisions. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I want to say a few things. I can agree with, to agree with Andy, because if you remember, Andy, as soon as we approved the developer agreements, lo and behold, we got the word back that we're going to reduce the commercial. And reducing the commercial didn't say you're going to make it open space. Obviously, the reducing commercial, you were going to consider homes of some sort. Okay? And we said right back there, not many years ago, that we were going to take a hard look at this and be sure that the numbers stay within something we can tolerate. And I think we've done that overall pretty well. Now, I may need a clarification from Bonnie or something. I thought somewhere in the staff report that I read, that said the total number that was allocated in the master plan to begin with, you have not exceeded that, even with the adjustments. Am I wrong, or did I misread that in the staff report?
You read that correctly. So in 2011, the specific plan allocated 1,143 units, and we're proposing 1,027.
Okay. So I read it right. So I think that's exactly what Andy's saying. We have to be real tough, because, you know, now sometimes, to talk to Roger's concern with some of the younger people looking at this, that we're, you know, promoting growth, it's going to come to some degree. We just have to be real, up here, we have to make a strong, to look and see. One thing that we never have surveyed in this town, or at least I'd never heard about it, is how many of these over, these senior people that are coming to town are here because they're here because of their kids and their grandchildren. Okay? We never know, because you say nobody's going to go in there. A lot of these people are in this town that I know are here because of their kids and their grandkids. Okay? But we never have got a count of that. I don't know if we don't pay attention, but that's significant, because they do come here, and that's what we want. We want this community to be a type that the grandparents want to come and live along with their grandchildren. Okay? So I'm pretty much, in looking at the total picture, and again, the developer community are usually, I don't know how to say it, they're as smart as we are, I guess, you know, or maybe smarter. They understand, the ones that are coming forward later, they know what we're doing, and Andy made it pretty clear. Okay? We want to keep it within. I don't want a large, I don't want to compete in size and numbers to Elk Grove or Roseville or any of the people that want to expand. Going over 100,000 population is sort of a heartburn for me, but I accept it under the big picture and looking at it. So I'm inclined to, I agree with what Andy's saying about what our job is, and me and him talked, the first time we heard that in the closed session, we said, whoa, okay? But it hasn't really been that way. Now, when you eliminate a school, and you've got a big site, obviously, what are you going to put there? Normally, it is, it is homes. So we have to adjust it, you know? But I don't know. I can't hardly argue against the marketing of the private sector, because they usually know, because I learned from one of the prominent developers here, we put in our time at risk for what we're advocating. The developer puts in his money at the risk of what they're proposing. So we have to balance our concerns as to what their concerns, and if they're looking and say, that product will sell, I'm inclined to agree with them, rather than what I know and my knowledge and the capability of adjusting. So I'm inclined to think that this project, and I know the reputation of the developer, and I think we can count on them and trust us. And Andy's right, we need to be sure the citizens know we're paying attention, we're just not taking the rubber stamp and doing everything that comes by us. We haven't done that. I haven't done that. This council hasn't done that. Nor do I see that in the future we're going to do that. But we can go to, as Japanese has a word, nitenori, that means real small, and lock up everything. We have to look at the bigger picture at times, and I find that hard sometimes to accept myself, because I'm sort of, I'm not a no growter, but I'm certainly a controlled grower. So I just want to express it.
Okay. First of all, I agree with Roger's comment about, you know, there has to be some benefits when you do a specific and general plan amendment, so it's within the process. So I think that was a good way to start, actually, the conversation, is what is the benefit? The other thing I want to really make sure it's clear on, and I'll tell, as I said to Andy, you're not the only one that's really paying attention to the unit count, and we've made it very clear, we're very sensitive to unit count. I would have said no, in fact, if it weren't for the fact that this isn't the home builder that's increased the unit count, they're under their unit count. So this action is not increasing the overall unit count. It's already up before they got here. And that's where all of us up here, and I would imagine that my colleague, Councilmember Gaylord, was also in tune with us, we're going to stay really on top of those numbers. And like you said, we took out 2 million acre, or 2 million square feet of commercial. We knew it was going to turn into something. Houses were going to be some of it, and that was regional concurrence, knowing, talking to economic development people as well as our housing stock folks, that we knew there's going to be more houses. So we did set a cap. Actually, we did. And so, you know, as Andy said, there's extraordinary circumstances, and that's fine. But I agree with Andy that we need to bring forward sooner than later, call it a workshop, call it, you know, something, whatever. We need to have something where we kind of revisit all these numbers and reaffirm what our policy strategies and priorities are. More importantly, you know, what our, I guess rules would be, for lack of a better term, of how we're going to allow to look at other amendments coming forward that might have an effect on the overall density count. But again, I want to make it clear to the public that are watching this, as well as people online or at home, this action potentially, if it gets approved, is not raising the density count. So to touch on a couple of things, and again, Roger, I appreciate the way you actually asked your first question. This is the way I look at it as benefits. Number one, thank you to New Home for finally listening to somebody that's been asking for almost 20 years to put another age-restricted type of single-family for-purchase product in this city. We've heard for years and years and years and years and years, we have to move out of Folsom to go to Lincoln, Rockland, Roseville, to get that type of community. And the gentleman was right on the Diamond Glen. Rarely do those properties stay on the market. In fact, a lot of times, it's rare to even see them sign up. They're sold generally when someone is announcing they're going to move. It's a very, very popular product. I was on the Planning Commission at the time when that thing was actually going through the process. So it's an extremely popular product, and I've been asking at different phases throughout my career up here, some of the developers in town, please, please, please consider building an age-restricted community, because we're in, I mean, huge, huge need for one. So I guess I'm the proponent for asking for a change, if you will, on this particular one, because they actually said, what do you think? And I said, you know, if you're going to make a change, I'll consider it if you look at this thing. So thank you for making it part of the change request. The other thing I want to bring forward, I think, is a huge benefit, quite frankly, is the fact that, you know, these guys had to deal with the alignment for the connector. And there was a lot of land swapping going back and forth, there were a lot of dollars that could have been flying back and forth. You know what? These guys said, do what you need to do for the connector. And that's that four-lane roadway that we so desperately need as a parallel capacity Highway 50. These guys never hesitated to do what needed to be done, so we could make that alignment happen. And I think that's a huge, huge benefit to the community. If you measure it in time and dollars, it's in millions, in my opinion, for what needed to be done, could have been done, but they stepped up and got it done right away. So that, to me, is a thank you. And Ernie, you actually said something about the people coming. You know, we put out in probably 10 years ago, SECOG showed the growth projections in the next, through 2035, we have 2.5 million people coming, and we put this out 10 years ago. They're still coming. So we have to plan smartly for it. And I agree with Ernie, or Andy's comments, you know, yeah, demographics change, product style change, all that kind of stuff changed. We've got to be censored to it, but we don't have to change to it, because it does go in cycles. And I know in the 42 years of what I've done for a living, I'm very aware of that as well. I remember Roger and I met a number of years ago, I think it was 2012 when we first met, and I actually liked his comment when he said, Steve, you know, there's a part of the city doesn't seem to be served well. And now we're up here with one of my colleagues serving that part of the community, which is, as he said, I guess he'd have considered himself a millennium. And that, to me, was a very dynamic statement, because we're looking at product that I hear on a regular, consistent basis, actually, I hear two things. I can't get into the city of Folsom with new product, because it's too expensive. I can't get in the city of Folsom, because all the single-family houses are too expensive. How come the city isn't building townhouses? We have condos, townhouses are different. Maybe we can do some of those things. So really, that's been a repetitive question in the city of Folsom for many, many years, not only up here for us, but in my private life and some of the other organizations I'm involved with. So I think that, again, was a good word to hear, but only works for me because you guys aren't raising the dwelling count down there. You're still way under the cap, and we're sensitive to that. You know, I guess I want to hear from Jim, too, just to kind of reiterate the concern we've always had about the financing plan, because there are assumptions about the services, amenities, et cetera, et cetera. With this change, I'm going to assume the financing plan is intact, because again, they're still well under the cap, we assume, when we made that financing plan assumption. But I'd like the public and the council to hear it from the man who has to watch the numbers before he goes, the manager with his tail under his legs going, oops. So Jim, what are your thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before Mr. Francis jumps in and answers your question, I just want to clarify, the, I believe what you're saying about this project is not increasing the unit count is in reference to the overall Russell Range allocated unit number under the Folsom Plain Area specific plan as originally presented, which is true. However, this particular project for Phases 3 and 4 is increasing the overall by 124.
Oh, I don't disagree with this, Phase 3 and 4, but the overall entitlements that they're entitled to build is still less than if you take the grand total of all.
Under the original Folsom Plain Area.
Under the original Folsom Plan, exactly. That's where it's coming from.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying this, Steve. It's a good point. Jim?
First of all, I try to avoid going to the city manager with my tail tucked between my legs with an air, so I try and be careful about that.
I don't think you've ever had an air, Jim, so that's a little levity with us.
Just in general, we do track each of these changes according to the original PFFP, and we track it in terms of population, dwelling units, commercial use, the square footage, the dwelling units and the population, all make up that plan on how it's devised, and the revenue and the requirements. We look at the service requirements that might be, and you heard some of them in this presentation, of course. And we've done that with all of the changes that you've made since the original PFFP was adopted. This particular project, we would say, has a neutral impact. It is not, we have a small increase in revenue because of it. We have a small increase in service need because of it. And we think that's a fairly neutral impact. And I would say, overall, and since the inception, just to maybe talk to a larger point, we would mention that, again, that it's really kind of been a neutral impact. You've had a population change from the original of about impact. You've had a population change from the original of about 3,600, and that's been roughly 1,250 units. Again, there's been a revenue change with that in terms of, when we look at revenue, we look at the SPIF fees, the impact fees, the property tax fees, and the sales tax fees. And so there's been a corresponding increase in that, that makes it, from our standpoint, anyway, and our view of it as a neutral impact overall since the inception of it. And that would apply to this, this proposal in addition. So we look at both on a project level and on a
Overall.
A cumulative level, yes, every time.
Okay. Any questions for Jim while we're on that subject? And then, really, the really ones I really, really, really like is the fact that, A, the traffic's decreasing. That's a big one, because obviously, we're very, very sensitive about that. And the trail connection, I'm not gonna belabor what these two gentlemen have already talked about that. And I want to thank you, and was Justin still out there? Thank you, Justin, for, and please, give my thanks to your fellow commissioners. That, to me, was a home run. Again, and so going forward, I really want to see more and more of these kind of trail connectivity-type arrangements, if it's between property owners, to have a safer route for the kids to get to school. Get them off these major roads. Get them, you know, get them a safe route to get to school. And so far, I'm very pleased with the spirit of all the landowners for many, many years. And, you know, Andy, you've sat through a lot, as well as Ernie. It's been wonderful. I mean, the cooperation's been wonderful. So I hope that we continue that same spirit. And I hope that the planning commission and park commission keeps their eye on it as things do come forward, as they look at the different, as they're executing their plan, that we kind of look at, yeah, it was this, but hey, if you move this a little bit, and you can do this, we can stick that in there and connect them up. So I charge the two of you guys to kind of be our watchdogs for us when those things come forward. We appreciate that. So I'm pleased, but I will iterate exactly what Councilmember Moran has said, and Vice Mayor Sheldon has said. I am gonna be extremely sensitive about any more unit count changes, just because, again, we made a promise to the community. We were upfront with our promise to the community where we had to change because the, the commercial was unsustainable. That 2 million square feet that we took out was absolutely unsustainable, so we had to be realistic. We didn't want to have a piece of property sitting out there like some of our other jurisdictional partners, where something started and it's been sitting in mothballs for quite a number of years. So we're real, real cognizant of that, and in some, some respects, you have some fluidity in what we do. And this, to me, is, is a good reason to do that. So Roger?
You know, I'll say I agree with both points. I think Andy put it very well. I think everything we saw here today was, was great. I love the product. I love the diversity. My opinion is, it's not really the density or the dwelling count. It's, it's the amendments to the general plan. It's, we're not, we're not setting a standard and following, following through. These projects can be, or this, this product, if you will, can be provided elsewhere in Folsom without the amendments. So I guess that's kind of one of my points. The other point is, when are we gonna stop going back? So it's the proverbial cookie jar, I guess, if you will. Not that, I mean, this is what you do. This is, this is, you know, as developers in the development community, this is what you do. So that's, I'm appreciative of that. I honestly, the, the argument of saying it's a, yeah, we're happy to provide millennial housing or active adult housing at a lower rate or a more affordable rate, anything that comes in Folsom is gonna be high, a high rate. I mean, that's just the way it is. So, and that's a great thing. We're a victim of our own success. So I don't think that's a tangible argument to, to say, hey, we should amend this and allow this to go forward. And to Andy's point, you know, when other folks come back and, you know, perhaps there's change up here, and that mentality changes as well, and this continues to grow, that's just my concern. So I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. Well, I hear what you're saying about the amendment change, and I don't disagree with you when we say going back to cookie jar. The only reason I'm even considering it is because of the fact that they're not the ones that increased the population cap, the dwelling unit cap, number one, number two. The sheer fact that if, if they make any changes to a specific plan, we have to do that from a procedural standpoint. So they have entitlements that are guaranteed by a specific plan, which are parts of the general plan. So any change whatsoever requires us to do it from a process standpoint.
Sure.
So I, I hear what you're saying, because again, I don't want to say it's precedent saving, it's process that we have to go through to do that. But your, your point is, now you've made four of us say the same thing. No more reaching back and seeing what else I can pull out, what else I can do.
Well, if we're gonna have that, I'm sorry.
I actually applaud them for the fact that they are the first coming forward, willing to change their plan, to put in some of this product that nobody has, has even offered this city for the last, well, since 1999.
But if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna come up and say, to that point, we do need to go back and see how we can, you know, have some, some dialogue and conversations on how to protect that. I don't think it would start with a, okay, that's good for this, and then we'll move forward and see how we can, you know, ensure it's right. I think it's, it starts here. It doesn't start after here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I agree. Yeah.
I'd like to say one thing, you know, I, I understand what Roger's talking about, being a point and stay there, don't move. Well, flexibility's got to be in life. Okay? It'd be nice if we could come up with a number and say, never will we pass that number. And then when you look at some of these projects that we do, they take years to get done. So what we approved, say, in '90, may not hold true in 2000. Okay? And if we're, if we're gonna say no, we said '90, this is it, just go away, well, they will go away. And then we'll have no housing for people, and then nobody will come to Folsom. So I, I understand Roger's concern. I had the same thing when me and Andy talked about it, when they, we adjusted the, the commercial. And I had that all my life in this town, to watch out the numbers, okay? And no bait and switch. And I don't think we have that now. I think that, I think the development community understand that you're gonna have to justify an individual basis before we move. And it's not just because John did it, I can do it. No, that's not true. John had, had to, I hope, convince his council that John had a, had a position. And you don't ride on that position just because somebody else made the precedent. It doesn't have to be, and I don't think we have to set precedents on this. Every case should be individually scrutinized. It's real hard. So I, I like standards, and we did that. Steve and Jeff spent a lot of time in the staff effort and all that, doing a lot of hard work in the development community. But when it takes us 10 to 15 years to start seeing actual production, we can't just say no. We're not moving an inch. But if we move an inch, it's gotta be justified in our minds, and all five of us have to think it's okay. And I think we've done that to date. So I'm just sending a message to the people that are coming later, that we're gonna look at yours just as hard as we're looking at this one. It's not a pro-good pro. It's not gonna happen. Not in my cases. My pro won't go that way.
Okay. Any other further discussions or actions, recommendations?
I'll, I'll go ahead and move the item, or do we need, is this need like a lot of specific verbiage, or is this just move the item?
Do we need to do the resolution order in separate?
Separate, please. All right. I'll let somebody else jump in. My, my laptop died on me, so.
I'll move adopt Resolution 10092.
All right. I'll go ahead and second that.
Any discussion on that? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gaylord.
No.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And then I'll move to introduce the first reading of ordinance number 1282 by title only.
Okay. Go, go ahead and second that.
Oh, I'm sorry, call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, and again, thank you again for the connectivity discussion. Again, thank you, Justin, your commissioners, for that suggestion. It's very beneficial to us. Okay, call the next item, please.
Next, we'll be convening the Joint City Council, Successor Agency, PFA, Folsom South 50 Parking Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting. We'll call roll officially as Councilmember Gaylord.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Miklos.
Here.
And Howell is absent. First item before you tonight is your consent calendar.
I'll move consent.
I'll second. Roll the roll, please.
Councilmembers Gaylord.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes.
That takes us back to reconvene the city council meeting.
Okay. So show us as reconvene the city council, and with that, we'll move on to city managers' reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. There's certainly a lot of things going on in Folsom that I could talk about for a half hour, but tonight, it's about our chief and my friend Cynthia Renaud. So you've probably all heard today that she is leaving us to take a job in Santa Monica, California. And I, you know, thought I'd tell a little story. Of all of the things I do, one of the most gratifying is that I get to play the role of coach. And it's great to see one of your folks that you've been spending a lot of time with, you know, kind of graduate to, you know, the city's equivalent of the New York Yankees. Right? So those of you that know me know I'm not a, not an American League fan, and I'm particularly not a New York Yankees fan, although some of us are. But I do recognize the New York Yankees, pardon me, are one of the most storied franchises in baseball. And the City of Santa Monica is one of the most storied cities in California. It is a really cool place. It's much, much different than here, and it's much bigger. So it's great to see one of our flock move on to the big leagues. And we certainly are gonna miss her around here. I certainly am. She's gonna have to ring up some long-distance charges now to introduce my wife to, to other shopping venues that tend to cost me a lot of money now and again. But Lauren and Cindy do share an affection for some particular shoe stores around California that, that are few and far between, but have quality footwear nonetheless, and very expensive footwear at that. So that, the inconvenience of that might actually help my pocketbook. But Cindy, you have done a great deal of work here. Certainly, we could've ignored this for a while while you, while the whole community kind of deals with the news, but I just thought it would be important for me and the community, and give the council an opportunity to say thank you and best wishes. And we'll have a few more times in the, in the next few weeks as you wind up your career here. But, but wow, what an impact you've had on this community, and we absolutely wish you well.
With that, I have nothing else.
Andy, you want to start?
Yeah, I'm happy to start, and I have nothing to add except ditto on that. So couldn't have said it better myself, Mr. City Manager. So again, as I've shared, chief, congratulations. We, we will miss you, but there isn't one person in this city that isn't extremely happy for what is, for all of us, not unexpected success. So, so congratulations, and sincerely wish you all the best.
Okay, Roger?
I have nothing. Thank you. Good night.
I always have something, you know. Sport update, I do not know what the Folsom Boys' basketball team is doing. They're playing Sheldon again. They pulled a major upset by beating the top team in California. And so that's pretty cool. So more.
Girls' team.
Unfortunately, the girls' team, I was there, we had it in the bag, and it got away. But that's sports. That happens all the time. But good for the girls. They had a tremendous season, probably the best team I've seen in the 30 years I've been here as a team. So good show regardless of their moving on. I did attend, Will was there also at the Little League opening day for national, and again, they have the parade. They, they haven't given it up. And they missed the mayor, but they knew he had other commitments, because he's, he's an avid fan for baseball, as we know, okay? And, but the weather was beautiful. Today is football weather, and we saw the outcome of the football team, the junior bulldozers. But just seeing all these kids enjoy what they're doing, and what the, the population, the coaches, and the staff, and the parents, what they do to have these kids enjoy this kind of life is what we are here for. And so I enjoyed the weekend, and I look forward to the, we need the rain. When it dries out, these kids can play ball. So that's all I got.
I can't top much of that, especially what the manager said about our illustrious chief of police. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:36.